...Rando is not here. Mary Lee Graham, here.
Carly Sager, here.
Diana Chun, here. Ronnie's not here and I am present. Can we make a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dear heaven, Father, we come here tonight, Lord, trying to take care of our city business. Lord, I pray that you'll just watch over each and every one of you. You'll give the wisdom to the council and to everyone that's here. Lord, I pray that you'll just forgive us what we've felt and forgive those that send against us. We give you all praise and glory for it in Jesus' name.
Amen. Clint Bush.
Hi folks, I'm Clint Bush. I'm in Liberty County Elections Administrator, voter registrar. And you will have the city election this week and next week. And you are contrarian to let the county to run your elections. And I said, I'm your administrator. I like to always get out to my jurisdictions during election time if you have a council meeting and see how things are going, answering questions that you may have about elections or elections issues. I work for you. My office is at the forecourt in Liberty. Today, you've only had 15 folks vote. You have all week, nine to five this week. Next week, you have seven to seven on Monday and Tuesday. And then, of course, Election Day is May the first, seven to seven at your new City Hall. I think we're the first folks officially in your City Hall at the moment. Y'all have treated us very well over there. You've got us chairs, good tables. It is a touch loud, but we do thank you for that. So with that being said, do you have any questions about your election? Do you have any comments, concerns, or anything that I need to know about?
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. We like to get out.
We're super excited that we get to vote in our City Hall.
I know you are. I know you are. All right, well, I don't want to take any more of your time if you have any questions. You can miss each other all the time. Don't hesitate to give me a call and I will hand my staff to work for you, like I said, so that we can help you. I want to hang around for a little while. Meeting, and then I'm going to get out for the fun start because I'm in Marshall. And thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Danielle Inman, you're LA. Mr. Page. Camila. Kick it, pounds. All right, number six, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the minutes for March 29th, 2021, and related matters.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes for March 29th.
How's that gonna? All favor?
I have all favor.
Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the renting, purchase of the coffee machines for the City Hall.
This one's going to be just like a one-off, but this week, neat, because I still have documents to scan in. You know, I've scanned in hundreds, I still have more to scan in. Minutes about $100 a month, depending on how many copies you make or how many items you scan in. They take care of the maintenance of the coffee machine. They fill the toner. All you do is put paper in it.
And it's $100 a lot?
Around that, depending on how many copies you make.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it can go cheaper, it can go, but...
So just about, right?
Around $100.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve renting, like renting of coffee machines for City Hall.
How's that? All favor? Okay, number eight, consideration, discussion, and correspondence between the mayor, Mary Rando, and Solana in Liberty County and related matters.
I'm going to start off. I had a conversation with Carl, our attorney, and asked him what he knew was being discussed and was it being discussed. And the only thing he was aware of was the first general obstacle that they were trying to put into place to fix the roads between 347 North and 1010 at the time when she first came into the office. That's really the only thing that he's known besides the meeting over at the county where she was on the phone, or he was on the phone with her and the attorney Poston prior to the last meeting. He says other than that, no, he knew they were friends, that they had conversations, but not discussing city business. With that being said, once the recordings came out that they were matching up the times with after talking to him, our meetings, he was not aware of that. I would like to propose, because this is how we've done it in the past, I would like to propose that if anybody meets with anybody in Liberty County or with anybody from the developer side, that there always be two people. Either the mayor and Missy or the mayor and one of the council members, or a council member and a ma, or Missy Jeff, two people. And the reason I say that is because we're in legal dispute with them. We need the two-party policy just to cover ourselves in everything that's said in the meetings. If we don't put that into place, we're going to have some trouble. There is a conflict of interest because she has personal friends with him, granted. So there are going to be conversations that she does have with him, but it needs to be separated from personal to business. How can we prove that she's separated personal from business? You really have no way to prove it unless it comes out in phone records that it's happening right after the conversation with somebody.
How can you prove that to you?
That's kind of, that's kind of just what you, you see. You can't really prove it. That's why we say if you're going to have discussions... Exactly. So we would like to have it done that way. And another suggestion is that if the developer wishes to do something, we need to have a special meeting and he can come in here and talk to all of us, because that's the only way we can get together and talk about it. That's why we're having this meeting tonight. We can't discuss this unless it's in an open meeting. Okay? We would like the same thing for them. Either they come here and discuss it with us, or he puts it in writing and sends it to our attorney and it's something that has options that we can sit down and discuss. Same thing for him. It should always be handled that way. I mean, there shouldn't be a reason for any discussion on, is it legal, what's being done, what is being said? Let's have it open out in the meetings. That's what we're doing. And that's the way we'd like to see it happen. That's why I'm requesting that two people be present at every meeting.
I don't see why the lawyer wouldn't be present at the meetings if they're discussing something that's probably going to be in a lawsuit.
If he is on the phone?
If they're for a lawyer and she's calling the lawyer and then turning around and calling the developer, to me, that's just...
Whether she's talking friendly or not, it doesn't look good. And to me, it doesn't look like she has Plum Grove, City of Plum Grove's best interest at heart.
And I can follow up what Diana said, that I also spoke to Carl, the city attorney, and he did advise Mary that talking to Trey Harris would, looked like impropriety. And he did not recommend that she talk to him, because it did look very bad. So, I mean, there is no way for us to regulate her phone calls. She's going to talk to whoever she wants to talk to, and there's nothing that we can do to stop it. But, I mean, it would be a good idea for any meetings, because I believe she's had several meetings with him at least, just based on the picture evidence that I've seen. You know, the meetings need to be with someone else. And, I mean, I would take that even further and say that maybe the phone calls need to have someone else on the line also, like Missy or someone.
Well, yeah, anything that's discussing city business, it shouldn't have to be two people.
So are we able to do, pass a resolution to that effect, or?
It has to be an agreed upon agreement.
Are we just asking the mayor to be honest?
Or asking her to be upright forth with everybody? And this is, this is how you do it. This is how you do it.
You know, so there are phone calls and then there are text messages, right? You can tell the difference in phone records, right? Sometimes for iteration or whether it says SM, X, whatever. I would think that one of the ways you could assure transparency is to recover, I can't recover those text messages. I asked for them, they weren't provided. Now, maybe they're gone, no people, they're like erased their text messages, whatever. But the council could, if you wanted to, not only recover those text messages, but say that any communications that you have that are in two people be done through a text message that's recoverable, right? So at least then you have some sense.
Tracking.
Right? So anyway, just blunt it off.
Now, yes, it can, granted, you can do a subpoena, you can ask for all of her text messages. It can be done.
And can we ask for her to, the communication going forward to be via text message?
I think we need to.
With, you know, someone else involved in the text message.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think there needs to be a record of everybody. If we weren't in such a legal battle, in such, having such issues, and it would, it's not unusual for a mayor to talk to people. Now, they can't make a decision, but they can talk to people. It's not unusual.
But not somebody that you have a lawsuit with.
Not somebody, not somebody who has a conflict of interest. You want to be open and forthright with them.
And it's just common sense that what she's saying, you have a lawsuit against somebody, you have legal action against somebody, you don't talk to them, you don't get it. It's common sense. I think everybody knows that, even the most inexperienced person. And, I mean, it is very suspicious that it's, that her phone calls him are within 10 minutes of her talking to our city attorney. That, that's very suspicious. That, that does not look good. I mean, I, I, I think, again, common sense would dictate that, that that means she's probably talking about city business with Trey Harris.
I mean, they're not honestly who wants the mayor...
You can't say that. You can't prove that. I mean, it's not...
No, we can't prove anything.
No, but we can use our common sense.
We can ask for people to be...
To...
To find her guilt.
Do you feel like, though, if she's doing, if she's talking to our, our city attorney that comes out of our tax dollars, and then she, in 10 minutes, she's calling him, do you feel like she's got City of Plum Grove's best interest at heart, or is she telling him? Whether she's friends with him or not, I don't care.
Only she can answer that question.
Exactly. But have you honestly, looking at the facts on black and white, she's calling the attorney, talking to him, and 10 minutes later, she's calling the, you know...
I'm giving a benefit of the doubt.
To me, I don't feel like she's got the City of Plum Grove's best interest at heart. I feel like she's got the developer's best interest.
Well, I gave her the best of the doubt.
I think she's trying to pull everybody together. My buddy's done anything in four years.
Mr. Page, how is pulling everybody together, not speaking one time to anyone at this table? She's had zero communication with anyone at this table. How is that trying to pull people together?
And vice versa, the same with y'all. You don't communicate with her.
Actually, that's untrue. I have emails that I can prove that I have emails...
How do you know? How do you know if I converse with her?
Or have sent emails to her and she refuses to respond to me.
You, you, see, you don't know. You, you don't know.
How would y'all feel if...
That y'all are hanging her before... I, nobody's hung, she hung herself. No, she did not hang herself. All you saw... And I thought I replied to something. I gave her the benefit of the doubt. At first, I told her, I don't trust you. But then, I told her, sitting right over there, look, we're going to go forward, and I trust you. That was like over, over a month ago, two months ago, maybe? And then this comes out, and I told her, I knew it. I told you I didn't trust you. I don't, I don't trust her.
I'm hoping by asking for what we're asking for...
And expect, okay, here's another thing.
Why don't we make all of y'all's records public on text and phone calls, not just various everybody?
That's fine, too. They can have mine.
That everything needs to be transparent.
That's fine, because I don't text none of them. You can have all my messages, but I don't text none of them. You want my records?
I don't want them, but they need to make them available for anybody that wants them.
Oh, no. You mean, available to who that wants them?
Anything, anything that has to do with city business?
Okay, well, that's fine.
That's what I'm saying.
We have nothing to hide.
That's what I'm saying. Y'all make it sound like it's almost a one-sided thing, though, that y'all want to go after the mayor for it, but...
Because it doesn't look good.
What's the one-sided thing, James? What's the one-sided, one-sided thing?
The way y'all bring it up, that she needs to turn over all her messages and phone records and stuff, but it needs to be for everyone. Don't make it sound like you're going after just one person. It needs to be everyone following the same rule.
Just one person who's talking to Trey Harris behind everyone else's back.
Okay, hold on a second.
Who's talking to Trey Harris to try to get these roads fixed? You think they won't?
We haven't heard anything about fixing our roads.
I just told that the roads are going to be starting Monday.
I, and this has been, I've met with Trey Harris more than once, and he has no intention on helping Plum Grove or showing up to a meeting. He personally told us that.
I don't think so either. So, I personally don't trust the guy.
Yeah, there you go.
You don't trust him.
I don't trust Trey Harris. I don't trust our lawyer. I don't trust the drunk guy you got over here investigating everything.
I trust, I trust anybody, but you've got, you've got, you don't trust Trey Harris.
I don't trust anybody.
But you think the mayor calling and talking to Trey Harris is okay? I mean, Trey Harris has let all of this happen. He's the reason why.
Someone needs to get this road fixed. That's what everyone out here is worried about.
There's way more to it. I, I personally, I don't think I've ever proven that a meeting...
Of more people.
Okay, but, I mean, there's way more in fixing these roads than what you even know.
Oh, I know more about fixing the roads than y'all probably know.
There's FEMA that we have to deal with. There, there's all kinds of stuff. We've been fighting FEMA since Harvey.
There's just too many people out here in Liberty County, and Trey Harris needs to stop. Because I leave, I have to be at work at 7:00, I leave my house at 5:30 just to get out of Plum Grove.
No one's going to stop them. Y'all don't have the money to...
That is not what we're trying to do.
To fix the roads, we have to pass a resolution. The council has to vote on the resolution. The mayor can't do any of that by herself. So how is she trying to fix the roads when she's talking to him behind our backs, because none of us had any idea that she was doing that? And never saying one single word to any of us about any of it? How is that trying to fix the roads? We're the ones who have to vote on it.
How are y'all fixing the roads? Y'all haven't fixed them yet, and y'all been trying to mess with it for years.
Well, we just passed it in our local agreement. I'll be happy to answer that. We just passed it in our local agreement with Liberty County. Yeah, we actually passed the two of them.
And Monday, they're going to come out in a few hours and fix the road.
No, that's not what's happening.
And you weren't here last week when I discussed this. We have two grants. One of them, two grants that are in work. One's a glow grant, one's an agri.
The road in one of the glow grants is 2012.
With those, it will fix approximately 50% of Plum Grove road. Okay? That's where, then we have to look at filling in after those facts.
And if you'd like, I could try to look up the times. Maybe we can ask them for security footage of the hours that we've spent up here at the fire department working on those grants to fix the roads.
I know y'all spent time up here, but nothing, we do not see...
You just said, none of us are doing anything to fix the roads.
Is the road fixed? I mean, this, you gotta understand, me and everyone else out here, all they see is that road because we're having to drive up and down it. How many people come to these meetings? Very few people come up here and compares to how many people drive those roads. That's what people are going to see.
Because they're not in the City of Plum Grove, they, most of them can't come up here to drive those roads.
And there's not many of us left.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
And why are these ladies being sued and, and the one that's sitting there where Barbara's supposed to be said is not sued being sued?
Yeah. Okay, hang on, stop. Here's the thing.
Hold on, hold on.
We all got sued, besides Mary and, and Missy. But Carly wasn't even on city council when all this stuff supposedly went out. She's being sued, but Mary's not being sued? What's the deal with that? Okay. Like I said, what would y'all think about it if it was Leanne talking to him 10 minutes after he took it to the... Oh, they, they want to hear.
Leanne's even talking.
They want to hear. They want to hear.
Let me ask you something. Do you have a problem with us asking that there be two people in all the meetings?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
I think the transparency needs to be that way across the board, though.
And that's what we've always done. We've done that across the board. And when the phone records come up, that was Wayne that was asking a question. Yes, can it be done? Sure, you guys can answer. You guys can ask for records at any time you want. You should supply a subpoena, and we take it to our phone companies, they pull the data, and we react with the personnel. Anybody has the right to do that. You just have to supply a subpoena to us. And I don't have a problem doing that. I don't think any of us did. But we, I'm just asking that there be two people so that we know what's happening, so that it's not a he said, she said. And the information comes back to the council and we can make decisions off of it. And that's what I'm looking for.
But as for her article with blue on it, I don't hate Trey Harris. I don't like what Trey Harris has done, but I don't have hate. I don't even know the man personally to say I hate him. Never said that. I have said, I don't like what, how our roads are, I don't like what he's done, but as for hate, I don't hate the man because I don't know him like that.
No, we don't like, we don't like the, you know, I don't even mind having the development there. It's that they do things properly.
Right.
Exactly. That's what we're looking for. And so, that's what our disagreement with him is. It has nothing to do personally. And I'm really tired of people saying that it's racist and we just have it, and that we have it been that against him. And it's not.
You know, who have people that have been here, my husband's been here his whole life, been here 30 years, and water's never come up like this.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm not just concerned with exploring Plum Grove. I'm conservative people in them colonies, too. That if it floods back there, there's going to be a lot of deaths back there.
Well, they can't get out.
They're on high ground. They're higher than we are.
But they can't get out. They can't get out. They're stuck just like...
Why would they get out? They're on high ground.
There's been elevation studies done, and I can try and provide the specifics for you, but they're not higher.
No. They're, they are higher than that, but they're still going to flood.
Your, your, your house is eight foot higher than mine. That's why you didn't get water in your house and I did. You're in Harvey.
Regardless, I'm saying we have elevation studies from the subdivisions, and I can try and provide those for you if you'd like to reduce.
But you're in Harvey.
And they're going to flood and it's going to be...
They're in Harvey, nobody back there flooded, right?
During Harvey, I was on... I was back here during Harvey.
Yeah, okay, but it's been years since Harvey.
Yes.
There's been a lot more stuff done back there since then, so...
Yeah, I also wanted to address...
Pretty sure that here in Amelde, our high water vehicle was transporting truckloads of people right back by road while I was sitting there watching the water.
I actually got more water than here in Amelde than I did Harvey, because of the drainage coming from there, coming from the...
They were evacuating people from across the road in front of my house during Harvey.
Put that in the blue on it, that I don't hate Trey Harris.
I have a statement.
And my name is Barbara Norris.
I'd like to address that. That was not, that was not an article, that was a letter to the editor.
A letter to the editor, whatever, but you can...
I'd like to address that, too. That her letter to the editor was borderline slanderous.
Yes, it was.
No one on this council hates Trey Harris. We want him to help fix the roads. We want him to do things right. It's very simple. And, and you can look at the Liberty County, what's the, the development specs, and he doesn't meet any of them.
Code.
Code.
It's the code.
Okay, I want to speak to that.
I'm not done, I'm not done. She, in her letter to the editor, she claims that we all hate everyone over there and we, we, we want them to leave. No one here wants them to leave. We're, we don't expect anyone to leave.
We want them to be happy back there. We want them...
We don't want anybody to flood and drown and not have a way out. We want them to help fix the roads. Mr. Page, you talked to Brent Lane. You heard that they have no intention of fixing the roads that night out here. I, I mean, we, we just want, we just want him to be responsible for the damage that he's done and prevent any damage going forward. That does not equal hate. Disagreeing with someone does not equal hate.
And let's, let's make something really clear. Look to the future here, because after so many years going by code, after so many years, all of those water ditches and all of those roads get turned over to Liberty County for maintenance. Who's going to be paying for that? Every single property owner in Liberty County will be paying for this going forward. It's not just Plum Grove.
I want to speak to the statement that y'all are making about not doing things properly. Who's the governing authority?
The council.
No, I'm talking about if he's not doing things properly, there's got to be an inspection, there's got to be a governing authority.
David Douglas is over all of that.
Who's David Douglas?
The one that does the inspections. He's over the inspector.
But he works for the county?
He works for the county.
Okay, so if, if they're not doing things right over there, where is he stepping in to?
It's Liberty County.
He's not. That's what we're trying to say. We request that all of this application, because FEMA requires all of that.
Now, you're right up to where he did his new video.
They won't give any of it to him.
So can I just give you a quick history so you'll understand? So, David Douglas has been the engineer for what, three or four years? Okay? In 2019, Liberty County passed a new, and I would say a much more sophisticated development ordinance and drainage ordinance, okay? But even back in 2004, the county passed an ordinance that dealt with developments, right, in general? And basically said, whatever you do, right, whatever you build there, whether it's a mushroom plant or houses or whatever, can't damage the people that are downstream or upstream from you.
And that was in 2004, too.
That was 2004. The, the records that we've been making such a big deal about occur before Douglas got there, okay? Since Douglas got there, they have been using, and I'm not a huge fan of them, but whatever, LJA, LJA Engineering, right? So they sign off, right, and then Douglas goes to the court and says, LJA says it's okay. These are engineers, so it's kind of within reasonable standards. Prior to that, the engineer was a guy named Bergman, okay? Who seems to have lost all the critical records, right? Whether they ever existed or not is the question. So in January, the county attorney, who's been, I think, pretty cooperative, asked both LJA and Colony Ridge for their copies of the drainage records and the development records, right? And he said, no. The, the best way to solve a lot of this, I think, is for the county to demand those records.
Absolutely.
Because if they did it, look, let's, let's assume they did what they were supposed to do, right? But according to people who have looked at these records, the only records that exist, they misrepresented the soil samples. So when you're building in the marsh, for instance, and you say the soil is X and it's Y, then the amount of water that's going to rush down, I will tell you that I've talked I will tell you that I've talked to the Harris County Flood Control, top people. They've looked at the various records that do exist, and they think the two billion dollars they're gonna spend is gonna be all sort of screwed up because of the problems up here. The easiest way to fix it is for Trey Harris and for his loo- his engineering firm to say, hey, maybe your engineer lost the records because he, you know, whatever, right? Um, just give us the records. Then let engineers, the lawyers look at them all. If they lied or if the records don't exist, then it's a big problem, right? That's what I've been trying to push them towards. And I think for the county not to demand them three months after they asked for them and they said no, kinda tells you everything is...
Well, there's gotta be a higher authority. For, for number one, I, I, I get that the Burmans should've kept their records. Number two, the county should've had those records as well.
Yes.
So... I'd love to see what we haven't thought of any of this before, that we haven't been trying to find.
Well, I, I, I say assume because I know for a fact that the county engineer should've kept his records.
Well, they should have, yes.
The county should've had those records as well, so there's two documentations there.
That's what we're sending.
Sounds like they're missing.
Hold on, hold on. I'm gonna hear anything, hold on.
Plum Grove Fire Department, Plum Grove Fire Department needs to respond. Needing a booster to assist East Montgomery County at the intersection of Three Bar and Tram. That Three Bar and Tram will be the dead end of Three Bar.
Mr. Pageant, what I can recommend is that you write an email to Mr. Poston, Matthew Poston, and ask him to demand the records, which is what I plan on doing.
Who is Matthew Poston?
He's the county attorney.
And I can give you his...
He's, he has an email, he has an email where he requested it and they have not given it to him.
Matthew Poston was here, when was that?
So, that's what I plan on doing, is sending him emails every two weeks.
Spell Poston.
C-X.
P-O-S-T-O-N. Okay, I didn't know if there was an E on there.
And anybody else who wants to email him. The more emails he gets, the more likely he is to send all of that to their attorneys and say, hey, supply it.
I don't understand why the man's not supplying...
Your, your problem is not Matthew Poston. Your problem is the county judge.
Judge, yes.
Commissioner Arthur and Commissioner Wilson.
Correct.
Commissioner Karbowski seems to be asking some questions. But unless you get the majority of that commissioner's court to do the right thing and, and just make sure the development that they're doing, right, meets the guidelines. Because if they don't go back and look at what happened, you guys are, you could fix the roads tomorrow.
And they're gonna be damaged.
And they'll mess up again. It does, it's, it's not, that's a...
I, I would like to make two points. Number one, it sounds like there was no pre-planning done. Because if you build a development back there like that, these roads were built in nineteen seventy, how are you gonna get everybody in and out? Take into consideration, to my understanding, there's about twenty thousand people back there right now. It's gonna accommodate three hundred thousand people. What's gonna happen when it gets to be full occupancy?
And those questions were asked years ago when they did not take notice.
Well, that, that, that's the point I'm getting to.
Yeah, what are you gonna do in Israel?
That has got to be egress.
We just gotta...
That has, that infrastructure has to be in place before that starts.
Before they start it, those questions were asked.
We want him to do things right so that people don't get trapped back there and die. So that people don't get trapped in Plum Grove and die. You're making the point that we're making.
That's exactly what we're saying.
We want Trey Harris to do things right. We don't hate him. We're willing to work with him. And that's evidenced by us accepting the donation that he offered and then rescinded to fix the roads. He's not giving us a donation.
No.
But the city council voted to accept that donation.
Are you referring to the twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's gonna be a drop in the bucket, yeah.
Remember, that was that lot of that money?
I don't think it would even make a drop in the bucket.
It's not. To fix that road, we know it's going to take millions of dollars.
I, I guess, probably about three million dollars.
Yeah, it was gonna take like close to five billion dollars to do it, to do it right. So even with the grants that we have coming in that are gonna repair this road, as long as we keep flooding and the drainage is not fixed, it's going to deteriorate those roads again with the amount of traffic that's on it. There is no other way in and out. People are not gonna take the Grand Parkway because they have to pay for it. It's, it's just not gonna happen. So our roads are going to take the brunt of the traffic.
Well, and here's...
And it's not just here, it's the people going to...
Here's another thing. Our two-lane road is not gonna accommodate the traffic. My best guess, it's gonna have to be a four-lane mo- motorbike.
Well, that would have to be the city because Tech Dot is not gonna take it over.
Carly, can I, can I say something?
Go ahead.
So, um, my name's Jacob Clay. Uh, I wanted to talk to you for just a second, Mr. Pageant. Um, so I'm running for city council. Uh, I didn't want to, honestly, because I see how this team sits up here and gets beat up every single time they come into a meeting, they get beat up by the citizens. They get beat up by everybody that comes in contact with them. But I own three houses in this city. I've, I've, yeah. So I've, I've, I've lived here almost twenty-something years, twenty-two years. I own three houses. I pay taxes on three houses in this city of Plum Grove. Um, I'm gonna be paying over almost ten thousand dollars in taxes this year alone. And probably about eighty percent of that is going to the county. Very little of my money is going to this city. So what they're trying to do is they're, and sometimes it don't get relayed to y'all, and I don't think that it's getting relayed to them in a proper way, is they're actually up here fighting for y'all. Uh, I, I, I kinda support it, Carly. I help give away hot dogs, try to, done some advertising for her because I feel like her heart's in this. Uh, and then they're coming in here and I don't, I don't feel that y'all are profiting off anything. Y'all've got lawsuits that are about the drainage that are towards the developer. I don't think that they're personally gonna profit from it. But nobody in here is trying to help. Because I know that, I don't think that you've ever been to commissioner's court, have you?
No.
I, I have been to commissioner's court, and I'll tell you right now, I'm not trying to start argument at all. But I can tell you right now, the, the county judge is going to do zero for you. And that's where I'm paying my taxes. I'm paying it to the county. So where's the county? Why ain't the county out here? The county should be fixing these roads. The, the city is doing their best to try to fix all the problems. But just like they said, they're gonna come out here and they're gonna put us, what, little bit of money? Say they're not giving any money to the, to Del Sefino or they're not giving any money to anybody. That little bit of money is not gonna fix these roads. And the county will not pipe up and fix these roads. But everybody keeps coming in these meetings, every single time, and badgering the council. And I don't have anything against the mayor. I like her. I, I personally talked to her. I don't have any problem with her. I don't have any problem with anybody on this city council. But if y'all don't start working with them, y'all are wasting your time. And as far as the mayor goes, if she's having personal meetings with the developer, where's the developer? Why is the developer not sitting here in front of this council? Because he don't care. He sat right out in this front and said, his own attorney said they're not gonna help you, that they have withdrawn theirself from this fight and they have no intention. And they can go out and...
That doesn't hurt.
They can hate. They can go out and put asphalt in these roads all day long. And I don't know if you...
That's what he stood out there and told us.
I don't know.
Wow, he's saying that's what he said.
Leon was not the mayor then?
Larry McMillan.
Mr. Pierce was actually on the council at that time and voted for that. And Larry McMillan was the mayor at that time.
Correct.
Carly, y'all can put asphalt in these roads and I, and it's gonna come right back up. They're trying to do a long-term fix here. I understand that, that, that there's a long-term fix. There's more to come. They're twenty-two percent full out here. They just opened up thirty-six hundred acres. Donald Burton did behind my house. That has not got the first person living on it. That's gotta come out this same entrance. I don't know if y'all see the bigger picture.
By the time, there'll be three hundred thousand people.
Yes, sir. But that's what they're trying to fight.
Because they keep approving plans that we've asked them to slow down on until some of the issues are fixed.
That's where the, hey, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't signing up to talk, but...
Go for it.
If you wanna do anything, get your ten land down there to the commissioner's court.
Thank you.
And tell them to stop selling. They need to stop until they fix this. Because I'm telling you right now, if somebody don't stop this developer and put a stop to him, not saying that he can... Hey, I'll tell y'all right now, this is the very first thing that I said. I didn't have the money to go buy that land. I didn't have it, so I can't complain about it. If I'd have had the money, I went out there and bought the land and I'd probably developed it. I wouldn't have done what he done. It'd have been a lot nicer. But I didn't have the money, so you can't complain. If you didn't have the money to go buy it, don't complain about the developer. He had the money, he bought it. It was sold, it is what it is. But he needs to be stopped in his tracks. They need to fix our roads to where it can handle the traffic flow that's coming through here. And then we can proceed on letting him develop. I have no problem with them developing. Fix the drainage.
That's the statement I was making a while ago, is the roads should be upgraded first, then the development be done.
They're not doing it. You're, you're, you're fighting the wrong people.
I, I'm not fighting them. I'm just...
You are fighting them. Uh, listen, I made a point not to run against you because I feel like your heart's in this. Just like their heart's in this. But you're fighting each other instead of fighting the county. Where do you pay your taxes to? You pay them to the county. Go fight the county. The county's the one not showing up. They're sitting back here, and this is a freak show. They're sitting back here watching. All of y'all sit here and fight, and they think it's funny. They're sitting at their house right now. They're laughing. They think this is funny crap. Because we're down here fighting each other instead of fighting the county. They're not the bad people.
I know.
They're not the bad people. The county is at fault. The county allowed this. The county, developer, the, the, all of them. Everybody signed off on that. They didn't sign off on this. They're trying to fix it. But y'all gotta quit fighting them and start fighting the county. That's where our problem's at. That's where we're gonna fix this. It's not gonna be fighting them. And, and long-term, uh, hey, y'all need to get these, something done to these roads. Because what, what we're doing, and this is what's getting frustrating here with, with the citizens of Plum Grove, and I'm not saying anything negative to y'all. But what, what our problem is, is yes, I know, understand the long-term effect. But we have to do something where we can transit. So whatever kind of agreement we gotta make, whether it's a patch, whether it's a surface pat, whatever we gotta do to where we can at least transit down the roads is, is what needs to be done. And I know y'all are trying to do that.
We do have that in the works.
Yeah.
We just did our two interlocals, which will allow the, the commissioner to come out here and actually patch potholes. But it's not gonna be anything that he has to do major work on. It's the patching of the potholes. Um, unfortunately, it would've been out here last week except for they're all shut down for COVID.
Right. And so we've made a step. And, but that, but this is long time coming. You gotta understand the frustration of this thing.
No, we can understand where he...
Another, another thing that we've done is we have actually tried to work on the project interlocal, which is the interlocal agreement, the, the big project to fix Plum Grove Road. It's called the project interlocal. We have worked on it. We sent it to the county four months ago, five months ago.
Yeah, they're going back and forth over it. So we're, it is the worst.
But we haven't, we haven't heard anything back from them about it. We haven't heard anything from them.
But y'all are working for the city. You live in the city. Every single one of these people live in the city. And you're up down here fighting them. Quit fighting these people who work with them. Go, you wanna make a difference, go to commissioner's court. Make a difference. All right? Because you're not gonna make any difference down here arguing with them.
Mr. Pageant, no one's running against you? You're gonna be sitting up here come June?
Yeah.
And, and you're gonna be bashed, just like I'm being bashed.
And you better buckle up your, your boots there because I'm telling you, it's gonna, it's gonna be a ride.
You'll be fine.
But that's not the point. The point is, he's gonna be blamed for things that happened back when my dad was on city council, back when my grandfather was mayor. He's gonna get blamed, just like we're getting blamed for stuff that when Mr. Pierce was on council, what happened then.
Hey, and I'll tell you one more thing and then I'm gonna shut up. I talked to the mayor the other, the last meeting, and I asked her the same thing. It would be a perfect fix if Tech Dot would come in here and just put a deck on four-lane highway down through Plum Grove. It's not gonna happen. The mayor herself said it will not happen.
Tech Dot has already said they won't do it.
So let, let me tell you real quick, and I'm gonna shut up and I'll let these ladies do their thing. So what's gonna happen is, so Tech Dot's not gonna come in here and that's the, that's the ultimate fix. Because there's absolutely no possible way that anything that they ever do to these roads are gonna hold up to five hundred thousand families living back there. And there is no way that the traffic's gonna get any better unless there's a four-lane Tech Dot Highway ran through the middle of Plum Grove.
Exactly right.
So, so in all this arguing about fixing potholes and potholes, it don't matter if they pump thousand dollars in asphalt in this road. It'll be tore up in the next two months. I promise you. You mark my word. I, I do...
Asphalt is only as the face as anything.
Maybe we all need to get on Tech Dot.
We need to get our butt down to the, to the commissioner's court. We need to get with Tech Dot, and that's what we need to be working on. Quit fighting. Forget the developer. I don't give a dang. Do whatever. He needs to be shut down, though. He don't need to build anymore. It needs to be stopped. Let us get fixed what needs to be fixed.
I think he has a certain amount of responsibility in this.
Well, yes, he does.
Because the pre-planning wasn't done to get everybody in and out.
And that's what the whole fight is.
That's exactly right.
That's the whole fight.
Okay, guys, it's, it's not about the roads. This is supposed to be...
Okay, so, so let's go back to this direction. We don't have a problem. I'm gonna say, I don't particularly have a problem with Mary, but I do want the two people. I mean, that's just, we've always done it in the past. It's a reasonable request.
So I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, and we'll start with you. And how, how do you feel about Mary and what we found out last meeting?
I wasn't happy about it, and that's why I'm requesting that she follow what our practices have been in the past. Is that two people be at all meetings that's business-related.
I don't really have a problem with her, but I do believe that she needs to be a little bit more transparent. And Mr. Harris needs to come to us, not just to her, and discuss things like it should be discussed instead of just with her.
All right, right. It's our attorney.
She, yeah. Because she, I don't see where it's doing any good for her to try to make a deal.
Right.
So after the last meeting, when Mr. Del Sefino made his statement and, and all of this information came out about her talking to Trey Harris ten minutes after she talked to the attorney, I mean, of course I was unhappy because I feel like we've been busting our butts trying to get something done. And it seems like she's working against us, working behind our backs, but, you know, she's not helping us in any way. So it looks bad. It looks pretty dishonest and sketchy to me. And, and, um, so I was pretty unhappy about it. But also, I was ready to move on and, and, and work on getting the roads fixed. Work on the important things after the last meeting. I, 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 I don't hate Mary. I'd like, I, if there's some possible way, I'd like to work with her so that we can actually get something done. But then, then she sends her letter to the editor to Bluebonnet News saying, in essence, that the council hates everybody, the council hates the county, the council hates the developer, yada, yada, yada. None of which is true. That's why I requested that we have this meeting so that I could clarify no one on the council hates anybody, and that is a lie. That's a lie that, that, in her letter, that's a lie that Mary told. And so I, I, if we can work together, if she'll work with us, awesome. But, um, I'm not gonna let her lie about us.
Well, that's how I feel.
So are we back to trusting her?
No, no, we wanna re- well, we want to request that there's two people at every meeting. But I've always been in the past.
I run a bit, I run a bit. Let me tell y'all. Carly, let me tell y'all. So it's not about trust, okay? Let me tell you, it is about trust, but let me tell you where I'm going with this, okay? When you have somebody in your company that is over even like writing checks, okay? And the expenditures are getting out of control, sometimes it's better to put two signatures on there because it holds everybody accountable. So that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to just hold people accountable. It's the same difference. If, if, they're gonna have, especially since y'all are in the lawsuits. You're gonna have a meeting, another person needs to be present. And that keeps all of y'all safe.
You're right. Well, but here's my thought on it. You wanna know my thought on the whole... I'm not an idiot, you know, I, I have children that, you know, they show me little tricks and stuff you can do with phones. Burner phones, do you, I mean, come on. She can get a burner phone. She can use her kid's phone. She can do...
I was saying that.
All kinds of stuff that we're not gonna know about. No, I don't trust her. But you know what? May is my last meeting. I did not run again. And I, I pray that the new people that come in here are, are for this city and protect this city and, and watch the mayor. Because I don't think that she is all for Plum Grove.
I, I did, I had some people message me and ask about further action against her in regards to this, like what the options were. And, um, it, it, it basically has to start with a petition from the citizens of Plum Grove. That's where it has to start. If, if that's what the citizens of Plum Grove want...
If the citizens want to, the citizens have to start a petition to recall.
Yeah.
Recall her.
So, so it, um, it has to, that's, and I did verify that.
Do you know how many signatures it has to have?
I, I wasn't able to get that information. I, um, I, I should have that information next week.
I think it's ten percent of the...
And guys, it's up to you. We're, we're not, we're not recommending this. This is, we wanna work. We wanna work together.
But I'm exhausted with her.
I'm exhausted with her.
Yeah, and I think if we can just make it to where she has two people at every meeting, I mean, that's, that goes for all of us.
What, what?
And if she can cut down on phone calls.
You could say, oh, they have two people with me, two people with me.
I know, but if she's meeting, I know.
But she's still gonna do what Mary Arrendo's gonna do. And like I said...
That's her friend.
That's her friend.
Yep.
Yeah, it is what it is. I'm trust her as far as I can throw and I can pick her up, so what does that tell you? So what does that tell you? Okay? So here's my thing. You citizens better do something because I can't sit up here and fight no more. I fought for four years up here and it's gotten me nowhere. So when I become a citizen, ho, 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 it's on them.
I feel like all these special meetings in the, where you have to go back here where none of us can be.
Oh, those are our executive.
Executive meeting, I feel like she's not trusted enough to.
And I told her in the last executive meeting, I said Trey's gonna know everything we said by the time we leave here tonight.
So I think every town here in Plum Grove should have a problem with her talking to him. Whenever you're trying to fight to get it done, and she's telling him everything ahead of time.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, I know that Wayne Dulcifino had made a comment standing up at 10 minutes talking to the county attorney. The county attorney has to dock it on a book, what the conversation was about, because they, they bill y'all for it. So there has to be a conversation, the date, the time. If you can get the phone list, you can get what he talked about, and then find out what she was talking to Trey Harris about.
That's the next final.
Can I ask you another? Why is the attorney not here at our meetings?
He's actually out of town.
He's out of town.
We scheduled this meeting.
He'll be here next.
No, 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 but I mean, like, the last one, the other one, he wasn't here.
Well, it costs quite a bit to have him.
All right, we're gonna move to the next one. Cause we don't have to make. Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong page. Okay, consideration and discussion on the attorney invoices for Randall Law Firm and related matters.
So that's the reason that, uh, our city attorney hasn't been at the last few meetings because we cannot afford to have him at the meetings because the mayor spends so much time on the phone with him that, uh, she's run our bill up, I think, I believe higher than it's ever been before. Is that correct, Diana?
We've spent more money on our attorney this year than we did the entire entirety of our last year.
Oh, and then she calls Trey.
Yeah. So, so that's why we haven't had the city attorney.
Right, because he ran the bill up so much, we can't afford to pay him here.
But he is going to read the next one, hopefully. Um, so, um, I, we've, we've gone through some of the records.
Cause we have told her.
The city attorney records.
We still need to finish.
She needs to go through Missy to get records or whatever, but she won't. She calls Carl and then Carl says, well, I'll get ahold of Missy. Cause that's where you gotta go anyway. Get Missy's stuff.
A lot of, a lot of your questions should go to T M L. That's what we pay our fees to T M L for. And they give us legal advice. You may not get it immediately, but you get the legal advice. And that's where most of the questions should go that are being asked the attorney.
She has a lot of options. She can go to T M L. She can talk to Missy. Missy's been doing this a long time. She knows what she's doing. Uh, quite often, uh, the, the mayor will call the city attorney, and this is evidenced in the bills that we get. She'll call the city attorney, and then 10 minutes later, he has to call Missy and clarify because the mayor never spoke to Missy about any of the stuff that she was talking to the city attorney about. And that's in all of the bills. I mean, it's, there's, there's evidence of that there. And, uh, you know, a lot of her, some of the questions that are listed are like mayor duties.
Yes, it is.
Why are we having a meeting without her here?
She was supposed to.
She was invited to come. She declined.
She declined to show up.
I think she said she had a previous, uh, uh, engagement or appointment. This meeting's gonna be rescheduled. She could've been here.
Our work is gonna be rescheduled.
Dairy Day.
We're gonna have another special meeting with her here to address this more.
It's only fair.
Yes, yes, sir.
What I was told is that she didn't wanna come if we were gonna address her. So.
Does, does anybody know why she's not here?
She's a Dairy Day.
Why?
She's all Dairy Days.
She does Dairy Day every year.
She does it every year.
Every year.
Right there, that's all in.
So the bills, um, in, include requests, general requests about mayoral duties that was listed in there. That's something that she could ask T M L. That's something that she could ask Missy about. She could also call her previous mayor and talk to her. Her previous mayor made numerous offers saying, I'll help you. You know, you can ask me even just procedural questions, but she's never bothered to do any of that. So now we have the highest attorney, city attorney bills that we've ever had. We, the, the city council, actually, before I was on the council, um, passed a resolution to go forward with the police department and hiring Dulcifino. And she spent around, uh, four and a half thousand dollars, maybe $5,000, um, trying to stop that from happening with the city attorney. She had him going over and over and over it again. So that was the total. Yeah.
Wait, you're saying it's not true, then why? You said you had this paperwork.
I do have the paperwork, and it's not true.
Why are you saying Carl's not here?
I went through, I went through each one of those invoices. I was more than generous what I put on Mary. I, I broke it down, and she didn't spend the whole $30,000 that you said she used up a whole police officer's salary. Yes, you did. You're on camera, Carly.
Did anyone else hear what it said?
Four and a half thousand.
No, you said, back at one of the other council meetings, you said to her, you held the paper up and you said, it's $30,000 you spent. A whole police officer's salary. You said that.
That is a salary. That is a salary.
That is his salary, but she did not spend that $33,000.
She spent, she spent the majority of it, though.
No, she didn't.
Who, who did?
Well, who did?
Yeah.
Y'all haven't sat down and divided that up and tallied it out? I don't talk to the attorney.
We have.
No, I didn't spend any of it.
And it wasn't any of us. So who was it?
I don't talk to the attorney.
Oh, I don't know why you say it. What? Where's your paperwork? If you're gonna sit there and laugh, then you can just forget it. I've got it. Right you.
I, I was the one, I was the one laughing.
You weren't the only one laughing. Y'all think it's all.
He said something.
I said something that I thought was funny. And I, people will laugh when I say funny things.
But now, anybody who wants, anybody who wants.
Oh, now we can't see it. No, y'all think it's funny. Because I brought it.
He said, he said a joke. Okay, okay. So you don't wanna prove your point yet, right?
I'll prove it another way. I'll, okay, all right. Uh, council's input and discussion on local county and state updates and related matters.
City Hall's open.
City Hall's open.
Go vote. Go vote.
Well, if it's open, I could more meeting here.
Cause you can't go in there when they're voting.
Oh.
You can't touch anything. But we will, the next meeting.
The next may meeting will be in there.
We're waiting on final reimbursement for that. We'll spend about a total, let's say $10,000 to build the city hall. Yeah. After the final reimbursement.
All right. We'll make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. To Carly, the mayor. $153 was spent. That's including the locks and the cameras.
No, she's talking to the attorney. The attorney.
It just said it was more. How much? Around, we're almost up to $60,000 now for this year. Since November.
Yeah.
The mayor and I were sworn in. And how much is your normal? About $3,000 to $4,000 a month. What's our highest reimbursement? The highest one was. And then the grant that helped her build it was a grant? It wasn't, it wasn't a grant. What we had to do, since it's a large project, you have to pay the money. Didn't they reimburse you? But we had $38,000 in insurance. Oh, so they don't reimburse that because that's like, okay, a gift kind of thing. So you don't have to reimburse like. So you take that off of the, it was only a total of $153 spent. $153,000? Yes, with everything done in the first line up. And so you said, of course, does that take reimbursement? So the rest? Thirty-eight came for insurance, and we've gotten $55,000 reimbursed from the, from the, from the.